...actual first public hearing of, some will have two, but tonight some will only have the one public hearing, but I'll explain that as we go through. Tonight, we have the adoption of two small-scale amendments. One is the city limits, so the city will vote on that one. One is an unincorporated Leon County, so the county will vote on that one. There's a transmittal of a large-scale map amendment. The adoption of that will be on May 14th. And then there's a transmittal of a text amendment. That will require a vote by both the city commission and the board of county commissioners. And then the adoption will be on May 14th for that one as well. So for the city's small-scale map amendment, as you may recall, this is the Mura subdivision. This was privately initiated in the city limits. They're requesting a change from residential preservation to university transition. This would require a rezoning to implement as well. And it is considered small-scale as it is less than 10 acres in size. The residential preservation category is primarily residential in nature, up to six units per acre. And what they're requesting is university transition, which is up to 50 units per acre with some non-residential allowed as well. As we go through and look at residential preservation, we always pay specific attention to these to make sure we're not prematurely converting residential preservation land use category to a different land use category. And so we ran that analysis, which we discussed at the workshop. This is what the current future land use map looks like, as well as what it would look like if this is approved. So the blue is the university transition, the orange is the residential preservation. At the workshop, it was requested that there was a map that was zoomed out a little bit to show other residential preservation areas. The proposed amendment is here in the kind of the dotted line around it. There is one other near Chapel Drive in the Westminster subdivision area. And then there's another one over here, I believe this is Cactus Street, and one over here across from, I believe that's Sale School now.
Yeah.
And so the rest of the blue, the lighter blue, is the university transition.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Thank you, Artie. Great map. Yeah, that's very helpful.
A zoning would need to occur to implement this, so if this is approved, the zoning public hearing would be scheduled for April 24th at the city commission meeting that night. Staff is recommending approval of this map amendment. The local planning agency also recommended approval. And so tonight, this would be the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-0-10, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Conferensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. I don't believe there's any speakers on this item.
Okay.
Okay, I do have two speaker cards. Artie, if I need to turn those over to you, I'm not certain that they were left blank for the items for discussion.
So, Artie, this is Cam.
This is city only.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought. All right.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Yes.
The speakers are not on this item. A future item that'll come up. This would be a city vote.
City-only vote. I'll defer to you at this time.
All right. Is there, is there any questions? Is there, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Commissioners Matt Low and Daly being absent. Thank you, Artie.
So the next item is the county's small-scale map amendment. This is the Tower Road Light Industrial. It was also privately initiated one in the unincorporated part of Leon County. They're requesting a change from urban residential to the industry mining land use category. This would also require a rezoning to implement. It is also small-scale as it is seven acres in size. Urban residential is a, two is a land use category that allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre residential development. And then they're requesting the industry mining land use category so they can also do a light industrial zoning to do those types of activities. This is what the current future land use map looks like, as well as what it would look like if approved. And again, here's the zoning map, what it is now, and what it would look like if approved. And if approved, the public hearing for the rezoning would be on April 23rd at the board's meeting that night.
Move staff recommendation.
Prior to staff, prior to the motion, are there any speakers, public speakers on this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Lindley.
We discussed this at the last meeting. I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Deloche. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zip with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Artie?
The next item is the large-scale map amendment. This would be a transmittal, which means it would go to the Department of Economic Opportunity for Review and other state planning entities and agencies. Then it would, if there are no issues, have the state level come back for the adoption public hearing in May. So this was privately initiated in unincorporated Leon County. The request is urban residential two to the suburban land use category. There would not be a rezoning requested at this time. They would basically retain the R3 zoning, which is allowed in both of those land use categories. This is a large-scale amendment as it is almost 40 acres in size. The urban residential two category allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre residential. Suburban has the same residential densities, but if there were a rezoning to a category that allow, or a rezoning to a district that allows non-residential uses, that would be a possible rezoning in the future. This is what the current future land use map looks like, and this is what it would look like. I will note that the yellow next to the proposed amendment is planned development, so that includes a variety of uses as well. Staff is recommending approval, as well as the local planning agency.
Move staff recommendation.
This is a county-only item. We are moving staff recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any discussion on the item prior to vote?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to recognize the family, their consultants, for reaching out to the adjoining neighborhoods. This is a similar issue that's come up on the east side of I-10 with some neighborhood we've talked about at Blueprint. And so I just really appreciate your efforts, reaching out to them, getting ahead of this, and fully support the item. Thank you.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded by Commissioner Dozier. This is county-only vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion carries six to zip with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers.
The final amendment tonight is a text amendment to the cap improvements element. This was publicly initiated by the planning department. It's really more of a procedural change, as we discussed at the workshop. And the end result, nothing really changes. We would still adopt the Leon County District Facilities Work Program by ordinance, but we would not do it by comp plan amendment. So this is what the proposed change looks like. We were to strike out the part where we formally adopted by reference in the comp plan. Staff is recommending approval. Local planning agency also recommended approval. And this does require a vote by both the board and the commission. So for the county, this is option four in your packet. And then, once the county votes, the city would vote, and that would be option one if you choose staff recommendation.
Any public speakers on this item?
There are no public speakers.
There's option four.
Second.
Okay. County will vote first, and then the city will vote, since we've already moved in the second. All those in favor of the county signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six to zip. Thank you for being ahead of the curve. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, pro temp, Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion by the city?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Williams Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. And I guess there's still no speakers. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioners Matt Low and Daly being out of the chamber.
Thank you, Commissioners. As far as the schedule, as I mentioned, the two amendments that were transmitted instead of adopted will come back to this joint body on Tuesday, May 14th, 6:00 p.m. for the final adoption hearing. And the respective rezonings will be at the respective city and county commission meetings. At the workshop, mentioned that there would be a quick land use element update, status report. At the workshop, we were directed to bring options for consulting services to assist with data analysis as part of the budget workshops. We're currently working on that. There was also direction to provide a timeline for a possible future joint workshop, and we will be providing that as well. Since the workshop, we have had four public open houses. The digital workshop has gone live, and people are starting to take that. In addition, we have added three additional meetings. One is at the Micasuki Community Center on March 28th. That was a special request from the people of the community of Micasuki. We were still unable to schedule one at the Lake Jackson Community Center, so we found space at Forest Meadows. Being responsive to some of the comments that we've seen on Facebook about having the meetings, there was a request to have one that was not in the evening, so we will try to do this one over the lunch break, try to reach more people. And then there'll be a rural economic development workshop on April 18th. All of this has been updated on talgo.com/landuseupdate. We are also populating this page with the data analysis that I mentioned at the last meeting, trying to make it in a digestible format for the public and putting it on that website as well. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Public speakers on this item, Artie.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do you need a motion to approve that option five?
Oh, yes, the, the motion is to just accept the status report.
Okay, we would do that separately, correct? County, then city vote. A motion has been made to approve option five by Commissioner Deloche.
I'll take that, sure.
You sound just like me.
We.
It's amazing.
I'm the Dozier doppelganger.
Commissioner Deloche, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. On the county side, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleagues on the commission, is there a motion on option five?
Move approval.
Second.
Approved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioners Matt Low and Daly being out of the chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Artie.
Does that complete our agenda?
For the comp plan.
Obviously, where you guys get to go, but we're going to hang around for another public hearing.
We'd love to have you stick around.
Welcome to fill the seats. Have a motion to adjourn.
Have fun.
Moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. We are adjourned. My county colleagues will... shortly. Mr. Administrator, can you introduce our public hearing and then ask for any speakers at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is your first and only public hearing to consider the second amendment to the Southwood Integrated Development Order. The item seeks your approval to allow approximately 82,000 square feet for the expansion of Florida State University School. The proposed second amendment to the development order requires the approval of both the city and the county commissions. We're recommending options for option one, rather. And I think we had a speaker card, but if you're here and you would like to speak on this item, you could please, just for questions, okay? To conduct a first and only public hearing and approve the second amendment to the development of regional impact integrated development order.
Yeah. Do we have any discussion or questions regarding this public hearing item? All right, seeing none, I believe I had a motion. Motion was made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Dozier to accept option one, correct? Option one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries six to zip. Is that the only item we have for public hearing tonight? This is the portion in our meeting where we turn to Commissioner comments. And we have already had lengthy comments from all of our commissioners, including myself, which is a little bit out of character. But I'll start on the end, and each one of you will, I may have to hook them up with one of the little light systems there, Ms. Voss, but I'll let you know if we do. Commissioner Minor, and we'll move this way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, on Saturday, we had a, an incredible record that was set, and I think many of you already know what I'm talking about, but Coach Mike Martin from the FSU Seminole team had defeated Virginia Tech to make it the 2,000th win during the course of his career, which is the first time any coach in any college sport anywhere in the country has achieved 2,000 wins. So I'd like to introduce a motion for proclamation at an upcoming meeting to recognize Coach Mike Martin.
All right. That's an outstanding motion for an outstanding individual. It's been seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. It carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, you know, I, I think this is in the newspaper on two different occasions, but, you know, it's, two of the topics that we deal with a lot on the county commission are water quality and emergency management. And I just want to kind of reiterate how fortunate we are on the county commission to have two of our commissioners in a position to have a scope of influence greater than just within this room. Commissioner Dozier recently was appointed to the Florida Association of Counties Water Committee, which is a key appointment for us as Leon County residents, because now we have an entree into the state-level policy for water quality. I mean, I'm sure you all hear constantly from constituents about the quality of water in your districts, and this is a really great thing for Commissioner Dozier, and it's also a great opportunity for us to communicate through you to the state level. And then Commissioner Deloche was appointed to the FEMA National Advisory Council, which is helping to coordinate the local, state, and federal efforts on emergency management. So that's another entree to the federal level as well that we've had with you at NACO, but it's just another way for us to have access to that level of discussion. So congratulations to both of you. I think it's actually very great for the counties as a whole to have you two in those positions. The other thing I wanted to do, if you'll allow me just a personal comment here, my mother is here in Tallahassee from Austin, Texas. And I don't think she was here to see me, I think she was here to visit her two granddaughters, but I wanted to kind of recognize her real quick, if you'll indulge me. This is my mother, Patricia. So. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
For the record, we have a lot more exciting things to do in Tallahassee besides coming to our commission meeting. Make sure you check that out. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I knew it was something special about this commissioner. His mother's name Patricia, as is my mother. So, I mean, we got a little something, something, something that, that... Your mother's, see, all right, we got that connection. The pat, pat, pat connection. That's a good thing. So I'm really excited, and that percolates well. And there's nothing like when your mother comes to see about your children and see about you, and we say, welcome, Mom, we thank you for coming. And your son is a great, great soldier in this community. And he, I heard one of the, one of the stronger persons who offers critique in this community actually gave him a compliment for helping to lower the hunger index by 3.7 percentage points today. And you earn that from strong personal critique, and we appreciate what you do for food and for the people who count on you. We appreciate it. Commissioners, Ms. Kelly Walker is a volunteer for the district, who is a district volunteer coordinator for Leon County Schools. I'm requesting a, a resolution to recognize the outstanding services that she provides and the full hundred, I mean, I'm sorry, the $4 million worth of volunteer labor that she commands. And she has established a Partners in Excellence program with Monford Middle. And just over the last six years, for instance, wow, Monford's Partners in Excellence have collectively received donations of $750,000. And that's pretty tremendous. And I offer a motion for a resolution to recognize Ms. Kelly.
Motion to support a proclamation for Ms. Kelly Walker, who is a good friend and a dear partner to Leon County Schools, and I have known her for many years. Seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes unanimously. Thank you.
And then Commissioners, I received from Mr. Long a communique indicating a proposed transmission project. And I think, if I'm reading this right, it's like a map or something, that is coming through from Midway and coming down Commissioner Minor's, I'm sorry, coming down, yeah, Chairman Jackson's district, and then coming across, coming across Crawfville, coming up Crawfville, down behind, across the forest, over to Commissioner Dozier's district, and right over there. And I was just wondering, is there anything other than this single paragraph that could give us a little clarity? And that information can come later, it's just that something this intrusive.
Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, we, as Commissioner Proctor notes, what you have now is really what we have. The utility provider has not come in for a permit. They will at a certain point. It's 176-mile span through seven counties, of which Commissioner Proctor properly notes, we do have a segment. It's going to be mostly constrained within existing right-of-way, although there will be, they will be entering into private land transactions for perhaps additional easement with landowners. We have a very limited regulatory role. They will mitigate any environmental impacts, but that is about the extent of it. As far as our regulatory authority over these matters, of course, I'll defer to Herb if he'd like to add any of that. Commissioners, we will, however, advise you, though, at the point in time that we do receive a permit, in which we'll have a lot more information on it, but that's what we have at this point.
Are they required to give an environmental impact statement with respect to coming through our county? And is this gas, or is it electric, or what kind of line is it?
They are required to, to, if they are going to be in our right-of-way, to apply and to meet all of our environmental standards, to the extent that they impact any environmental features in Leon County. In terms of, this is electric transmission, is that right? And it's to increase the resiliency of those lines.
Very, very good. Well, you know, anytime something like that comes across District One line, or District One, we want to make sure we take, you know, special note. And I appreciate you sharing.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. County Administrator, thank you for sending the email out about the transmission line. As you know, and I guess I wasn't going to mention this, but since Commissioner Proctor brought it up, we started getting calls about this issue three, four weeks ago. Gary and I attended a neighborhood meeting on Tram Road, and you can imagine, a lot of the neighbors in that area and in Jefferson County aren't thrilled about 90-foot concrete poles coming in, and they are being asked to give an easement on their property. So there is a lot of activity there. A flyer was sent out with some of our email addresses on it, so you may start getting other emails from that or calls. And Representative Lorraine Osley's office is engaged on this as well. However, we all know utility companies mostly regulated by the state. We have very little involvement, as County Administrator said. So working with the residents to get them more information, we met with the company, but there's not a lot of role, a large role for Leon County. So appreciate the information, Ms. County Administrator. NACO was a great conference. Appreciate all the involvement there. But I was thinking, Commissioner Minor, thank you very much for your comments, and I wanted to piggyback on that and say we are a few months away from yet another Leon County president of Florida Association of Counties. So Commissioner Maddox, I know we've got an email out, you're looking for appointees to the various committees and other things like that, really looking forward to legislative days. And the Water Committee is a critical part of how facts move forward, so I think that's going to be a really big issue, not just for us locally, but under Commissioner Maddox's leadership in the next year. This is going to be a real good focus, and obviously, the governor's office, everyone is looking at this. So I'm excited about doing that and about your work there. The, I think that would be it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I regretfully, well, no, I didn't regretfully miss NACO, but I miss NACO because my son was born. So excited about that. Nicholas Gerard Maddox II entered the world on March 2nd at 6:33 a.m. Yeah, Deuce is his nickname. We were very excited. He's, he's kept me up every night since, but I'm very proud.
Does he have a jersey number?
Twenty, of course.
Okay.
No doubt about that, yeah. But look, it's good to be back in the chambers with you guys. Great meeting today, Mr. Chairman. You had a great meeting, great discussion. And I hope that, that we can, that the folks from Purpose Bill can really get that together and really make that work in the right, well, start running in the right direction, because I do think it can provide some, some quality to our community. And so I hope that those folks took the message that Commissioner Proctor, Dr. Holyfield, and myself, as well as the rest of the board, said to heart, so we can really do some great things for Orange Avenue Apartments on the south side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I might say, on the tails of comments offered from our next state president, that, Mr. President, I want you to know that I'm really pleased with the pending appointment. Is that pending, or is it already for Commissioner Dozier on the Water Committee? I want you to know, I can be available to serve in any statewide capacity that deals with Leon County, you know.
Okay.
I'm available, but any statewide capacity that's inside of Leon County only, I can be available.
Thank you. Thank you for offering your services, Commissioner Proctor.
One more thing.
Commissioner Maddox, and then we'll move to Commissioner Lindley.
Yes, sir. TSO, Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra is bringing to town an amazing concert. Oh, the understanding will be this Saturday. We will be hearing Seven Last Words. It's an amazing composition, and if you can come out and make it, please do come out and make it. Village Square is involved in it, there'll be conversation to go on after the piece is heard. If you have not heard it, I'm pretty sure there's some excerpts on, I know there are some on YouTube, but the Morehouse Choir is coming to the scene. Van Nuys Choir will be there. It is, it's going to be a treat. And so I'm glad that Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra brought to our community, and that we're ready to be involved in it. I'll be there, and I hope the rest of our community will as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Lindley.
Okay, a couple of things. Well, Commissioner Minor, congratulations. That was great to hear how Second Harvest has, perhaps not single-handedly, but multi-handedly brought down some of the areas where people are, food, have food shortages. It's a huge thing. I'm so supportive of your organization. Thank you. One of the most exciting parts of my past week was going to Leon Works, and I think Chairman was there with us, and it was an amazing day. Thank you, Matt, Brittany, Heather, everybody on the staff who pulled that together. It was especially nice to see some of the students... It was especially nice to see some of the students from Gadsden County and Willculla County who were joining us for the first time, and some six, I think it was more than 600 students. And Matt, what was it, about 130 different vendors and folks coming to talk to those students about career options. So it was a great day. It was lots of fun, and I know you all are exhausted. I understand some of you were at the Civic Center at 4:00 a.m. Am I right about that? Were you up from the night before, or was this? Not quite. Somebody lied. Anyway, it was a great, it was a great, great program. So the fun thing I want to do is propose a proclamation for Dr. Alex Brickler. Dr. Brickler is retiring as an OBGYN after delivering some 30,000 babies in our community. I believe he's turning 90, and he's decided to take a breather. So I would love to do it. I got to know him when he was writing columns for the Tallahassee Democrat.
Proclamation for Dr. Brickler to be presented at our next board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Minor slash Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Yeah, motion carries.
All right. That's it. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner, or excuse me, Vice Chair Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, my son's name is Patrick, so we got all sorts of things to comment here. Leon Works, nice going. That's, you should be real proud of that. I mean, we've really taken a program, and the staff's done a nice job supporting it. Rick, thank you for the kind words. Nick, congrats on the new baby. Kristen, congrats on your assignment. Round and round. May is National Bike Month. If we could have proclamation in support of that, all right?
Seconded, all in favor. Aye.
Question to staff, 2024 is our 200th anniversary. What's the formal process or where are we going with organizing recognition of that? I know there's a lot of talk about it, and I don't know if anybody's jumped out in front of it and asked.
Mr. Administrator, we will be bringing an item back to you.
All right, I was going to ask, just for that. Okay, that was my question. And then lastly, I'd like to see if we could have an agenda item. I don't know how many of you are familiar with social impact financing, social impact bonds it's called, although it's really not a bond. It's a, in my opinion, it's the way government is going to have to start delivering a lot of human services going forward. And the more we know about this, I think the better served we will be. It opens up a whole new avenue for us to basically figure out a way to finance some of these things that in the past have been great, feel-good things, but we put a little bit of evidence-based type of things tied to it. So I think it'd be, thank you, it'd be informational.
Motion made to bring back an agenda item regarding social impact.
Financing.
Financing. Seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Deluge. I will be brief. I promise. I had a friend in college named Patrick. March 30th is Big Event Day. We'd like to do a, I believe they requested a proclamation. I don't know that we will have one prior to that, a meeting prior to that, but Big Event Day and the organizers for that that come out. Last year, we had 30 volunteers that came out and did a full coat of paint on an entire wing at Fort Brans School. Amazing cleanup process in just nine hours. They were able to do some amazing work, and I would like to recognize them for that. A proclamation. Can I get a second? All right. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. It passes, seven zip. Also, April 2nd is National Service Recognition Day. If we could get a proclamation for National Day of Service. Moved by Commissioner Deluge, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor signify by saying aye. Congratulations, Commissioner Maddox. Rick invited his mom. I'm a little disappointed you didn't invite your three-week-old out to the lengthy commission meeting today, so I.
If she was any kind of grandmother, she'd have the baby.
I would expect, I would expect in the future that he'll be running around the chambers here, but congratulations to you as well as Commissioner Deluge and Commissioner Dozier on their appointments. Mr. Administrator.
Nothing substantive, Mr. Chairman, just congratulations to everyone, especially the Maddox family.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I hate it when this happens. I have a substantive item. First, the fun part is Deputy County Attorney LaShawn Riggins, as you saw in a memo, made the 25 women that you need to know. Her video is posted as of this evening, so I'd recommend that you look at it and then make fun of her tomorrow.
So moved.
The substantive item is you got a memorandum from the county administrator and I yesterday that deals with two and a potential third federal lawsuit that we have been sued in. Three different plaintiffs. They surround essentially the Rehabilitation Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the allegations are that our website is not compliant for site impaired, that the PDF files on our website are not readable for those who are site impaired, and that the broadcasts of these commission meetings, among others, are not sufficiently closed Those of you who have known me for a long time know that settlement is the last thing I like to think of. We're right, we're right, and we should stand up for that. But they have at least some backing from the 11th Circuit, because we would be in federal court, that if we haven't completely done all of those things, that the federal district court here in the Northern District could find that we are in violation. I'm fully prepared to litigate the thing, but my recommendation is that we not, because the deal is really too good. We would spend at least six figures on defending the case, and that's if we win. If we lose, there'll be six figures on the other side that we will owe in attorney's fees, because the ADA and the Rehabilitation Act provide for plaintiffs' attorney's fees if they prevail. The settlement offer from the plaintiffs is a global $30,000 total. That's inclusive of everything for the plaintiffs and their lawyers. They will give us a year to two years to finish our work on ADA compliant issues. We're really close, and I have to say, by the way, congratulations to Matt and Pat Curtis. They've been really working very hard since, well, since years, but a really redoubled effort when we funded buying the additional equipment in this year's budget. So in September, for example, you can have closed captioning today on our Facebook and our Twitter accounts. We're working on this. It's a matter of buying the equipment for Comcast. We're darn close to the national standard, but I can't in good conscience recommend that we take a chance at losing a couple of hundred thousand dollars when I can get you out of this whole thing for 30K. So my request is that you authorize the county attorney's office to negotiate a settlement under those terms and conditions. If something is wacky in the demand, then I won't do it. But if it is, as they have said, which is prospective only, no retroactive application, so we don't have to go back through 20 years of archives, they'll give us a year or more to implement, and $30,000 does it for all three cases. And so I recommend that you authorize us to do that.
I have three commissioners in queue to speak. I'll ask, for the sake of time, that we keep it brief. Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Deluge, and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. County Attorney, I respect your decision on this, and I think you make a good argument. Is it, it's my understanding that these suits have been brought in a lot of different places, and that counties, the technology is evolving. So we may actually provide more public access to a lot of different things, and therefore, it's taken us a little while to get the equipment from Comcast, for example, but we've been steadily marching towards full compliance as the technology becomes available, but this is kind of result of being as transparent as we possibly can, putting as much out into the public on all different platforms as we can. Is that fair?
It comes from the theory of no good deed goes unpunished. It is because we are so out there on technology and information that we provide on the website and elsewhere that it made us visible, if you would. And you're correct, we're now the 18th county who has been sued by the same group of folk. They have pretty much sued every local government in the Southern District of Florida and the Middle District of Florida, and now they're working the Northern District where we're in. A number of counties have chosen the same route to settle for the cheap. Charlotte County just did it two weeks ago, Escambia did it last week, so we're not alone. I hate it, frankly, but I think from a business standpoint, from a fiscal standpoint, we ought to take the deal.
I would like to make a motion for your recommendation and could not agree more. I think it is the fiscally responsible approach. I just wanted to make those other comments because this is, I think, no good deed is a good phrase. We have been trying to be as out front as possible and give as wide access as possible. You can see our earlier agenda items. So I appreciate, Ms. County Administrator, what you, all of the staff, have done to keep up with this, and we're only getting better. Thank you.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. There are two commissioners in queue to speak. Be brief. Deluge and Commissioner Minor.
One word, shakedown, but I would like to ask if we can contact FAC and our legislative team in an effort to at least see if we can get something going on this as a.
They're aware, and I've talked to them today.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. County Attorney, does this settlement, how vulnerable are we for a different firm with a different client that might levy a similar suit next week? Are we protected from that in any way?
We're not, but if we implement all of those things that we are going to achieve, then the answer is we won't be vulnerable anymore.
But until that time happens, when those, when that checklist has been completed, we're vulnerable at that point, right? Even if we're, even if we can show that we've settled on these three cases and have pledged to basically meet these milestones within a year or two, right?
Yes.
So long as we're in the process of completing that and reaching that milestone, we're still vulnerable?
Yes. Theoretically, yes, but I have, I'm not aware of any other lawsuits about this issue except by the same plaintiffs and same lawyers that we're dealing with.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, by the same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything else? No. Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Move. Move and seconded. Move and adjourn.